Good evening, welcome to the Monday, March 18 city council meeting. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, please call the room.
Alderwoman Condon?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Glab?
Here.
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Mayor Jack?
Here. Please stand to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to ask if the public would have any public comment at this time? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment? Sir? Tony Esposito?
Yes, thank you.
Step up to the podium, state your name and address for a public record, please.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'm also a resident on the Riverwalk. My name is Tony Esposito. I live at 3336 Waukegan Road in McHenry. I am a somewhat retired attorney and I have a license to operate uninspected vessels and certain inspected vessels by the Coast Guard. I'm here to represent a company called Chicago Pedalboats.com and we now currently have four boats in our fleet and we operate in the Chicago River. And being that I'm a resident up here and have been boating on the chain for about 25 years, I thought it might be a good idea to bring one of these pedal boats up and maybe use it on certain weekends as a trial basis at Miller's Point to bring visitors, you know, to the Riverwalk as an attraction and then, you know, hopefully, you know, market our company as well. So I have a little video to show you. It's basically a pontoon boat that's just almost 10 feet wide and in the center is a table. It's very often used as a party barge as well. And then what people do is when they get on the boat, they actually pedal and there's a captain. I would be on the boat with a motorized, you know, motor as well. So it's a nice attraction. People, you know, like to get out on the water. It's a very simple thing and it's, you know, something in addition to just getting on a pontoon. And I thought it would be a nice idea, you know. They do it at Navy Pier in several different ways and Miller's Point is such a great, you know, view and it's right in the heart of McHenry. So we were thinking about, you know, maybe six or seven weekends in the summer. We'd really like to be there for McHenry Days as well. And then we have our website and Facebook. Just in the last, I'd say, nine months, we've gotten 600,000 hits on it. So we're doing a lot to market it. Any questions that anybody would have or?
Did you say 600,000 hits?
600,000, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're really excited about the exposure. We're not the only company there that's doing it.
Uh huh.
But our domain name, Chicago Pedalboats.com, has somehow created a lot of interest in it, so.
Any other questions?
I don't, I mean, what else can I tell you? The boats are inspected by the United States Coast Guard before operational, so we have to meet, you know, certain requirements for safety. We have to have a crew. Sometimes we have to, depending upon how many people we're going to attract, we have to have a crew and a first mate. And so we're also insured and everything like that. So we'd be totally independent operational from the city.
Why don't, why don't we sit down and talk? I'm gonna be gone for a week.
Okay.
But when I get back, why don't we sit down and have a conversation? This is something that actually I've been working on for the last couple of weeks to look into and I've gotten prices on boats, I've got businesses that wanna possibly be involved in it, but if this is what you do, I'd rather discuss this with you and have you.
Okay. Should I just leave? I got a couple of cards, sir?
Yeah, yeah, you can link them to me, that'd be great.
Okay. I appreciate it very much. And I'm very appreciative of what's been going on at the Riverwalk as a resident. It's been, it's really been great, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Ben Keith?
Good evening, Ben Keith, from the VFW. Just was asking if we could amend the proposed ordinance specifically for the date when the jackpot would drop back down again. Our concern is, we've, in conversations I've had with our contractor, the parking lot may not be ready. It's weather dependent, but the parking lot may not be ready until June 1st. So what we were asking is extending it from, I believe you had it from July 1st, extending it to the end of July with the understanding that we would take time off during the yesterday so that there isn't a conflict with the yesterday. I don't know, man.
Yeah, I think it's a little early because I think somebody wanted to pull it anyway for the second.
Sure.
And of course, they need to open the public, rather than starting a total conversation at.
Yeah, we plan on pulling it.
Yeah, it is on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and just pull it.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, man. Anyone else who'd like to make a public comment at this time? See none? Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any items that council would like to pull for separate consideration? Alderman Curry?
Items D and E.
Okay. Alderman Schaefer?
Uh, I'm C.
Okay. Alderman Santee?
Same.
Okay. Alright, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve items 5A, B, F through L. Alderman Santee?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Alderman Curry? I'll second.
Discussion on these items? See none? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Devine?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Mayor Jack? I'm sorry.
The first pulled item on the agenda was 5C, ordinance amending Chapter 12 licenses and permits generally section 12-64 prizes of McHenry's municipal code. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion on this item.
I would say I pulled it because I talked to Mr. Keith and knew he wanted to address that, so.
Okay. You want, you want to go ahead and come up to the podium, let's go ahead and have this conversation. So he's looking to amend the data, as he was mentioning, to the later part of June?
July.
July.
July, my bad.
So Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that what I recall from that discussion was the fact that, I think Alderman Curry was the one that brought up the exact dates and we had talked at that time that we could possibly amend it due to the fact that the parking lot might not be ready at the time that they had hoped to because of the weather and everything else. So I really don't have, have a problem as far as if we look to extend it, what is it, 30 days above the apartment? So I think that would be fine for me.
Any other questions? Alderman Condon?
I apologize because I wasn't here at that meeting, but, and I have no problem with extending it, but you had mentioned about the yesterday, so would you just not have a drawing that week?
We would take time off.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
It would be announced and everyone would know.
Sure, okay. That, that would work well.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, just to, to follow up, so we'll have, there's certain dates that we should place in here, correct, Chief, in regards to the yesterday's?
Yeah, I would say that Ben and I have had a couple of conversations prior to the council meeting tonight. He was very quick to inform me after they met with the contractor of the issues they were having with getting the parking lot done, as he had stated two weeks prior at the last city council meeting. He's made it very clear that their intention is to not run any ticket sales or have the drawing between July 11th and the, through the 21st, which is the entire timeframe of yesterday's, along with the weekdays in between there. So what he's really asking for is a 20-day extension as an, as, hopefully a motion by council to amend what I had presented to you, instead of being July 1st, to, to have the reduction from 3 million to a million on July 31st.
No sales, no drawing?
No sales, no drawing.
Okay.
For those 11 days. I'm comfortable with that.
Any other questions, Condon?
Is it easier to make it August 1st or is July 31st, does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
31st is on it?
Okay.
It's either a Wednesday or a Thursday.
And if, if you extended it to 31st, our end would be the 29th, so.
Okay.
Keep it to 31st, July 31st.
31st.
Okay. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion for items, for item 5C, ordinance amending Chapter 12 licenses and permits generally section 12-64 prizes of McHenry's municipal code, amending the date to drop to $1 million as of July 31st. Alderman, Alderwoman Condon?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 5D. Thank you, Ben, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item 5D is the ordinance approving a moratorium on vape shops within the city of McHenry through December 31st, 2019. I'm looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Curry?
Can I ask for, hold on, I'll go ahead and make that motion. The reason I had it, hold on, I'll wait for a second. See if we have a second.
Oh, second, sorry. Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
My, my name.
Go ahead.
The reason I pulled it is it just, or, for me, it's just something that should be voted on separately by council, so. I did, I would ask though, the 30, December 31st, is it gonna take us up long to figure out what we wanna do? Do we need, do we need nine months, nine and a half months?
Probably not. I wasn't at, I was not at that meeting and couldn't get a date out of anyone if there was a timeframe the council had talked about. I didn't see any, I didn't see anything in the minutes on it, so I chose the date for it, but certainly council is welcome to change that to any date that you'd like to, it'd be great.
I mean, I don't have a big problem, no.
I don't think it'll take that long.
That's the only question I would have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it'll take that long.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels about it.
We have to end the moratorium no matter what when the action's taken, whether it's to lift the moratorium or to impose regulations that we seem to agree upon, so it doesn't matter.
Really, no?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Alright, alright. Any other comments, questions, by council? At this time, I'll open up to the public for public input on this item. See none? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 5E, ordinance authorizing the mayor and deputy clerk to sign and execute a school resource officer intergovernmental agreement between the city of McHenry and McHenry High School District 156 for the period June 1st, 2019 through May 31st, 2024. Alderman, Alderman Curry had pulled this item, so I'm looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Condon? Discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments on this. When you, when you look at the chart, you know, for a council, page 24, you're talking, there's a chart there that shows the, the cost going forward in the, in the split, which is at a 70/30 split, with the school district picking up 70% and the city 30%, which only holds good really for, like, right now. And how to explain that? The, the, well, first of all, the, the dollar split, if you look at, is actually in there as 70/30, but we're using a 3% increase per year, which is, you know, it really isn't correct because, just for example, this year, the budget coming up, which we just had one finance committee meeting on, we've got another one coming up. In that budget, the police department, those salaries go up by 4.4% and that's, and I did remove the, when I calculated that, I removed the two officers that were proposed so that they didn't skew the number. But, so even if I use, and then we, we don't know what, what insurance and pension costs are gonna do going forward, but I'd say it's pretty conservative to assume that it's gonna be about the same. So if I use 4.4% and I, and I run that out for those four years, and I just want everybody to understand what we're doing, we're not really, we're not really gonna be looking at these numbers. I mean, I don't think they're conservative enough. And so the difference, just so you understand what you're voting on, is probably gonna be more in the neighborhood of about $40,000 more costs to the city that the school district would've had to have picked up had, had we used the 4.4%. The actual cost of the city seemed to be more than that because ours is gonna go up by 4.4% as well. So I just wanted to make a point, I mean, it just seems to me that, you know, the, and it's important that we have the school resource officer and I, you know, Chief and I had a discussion on this and I appreciate his time and I fully support having a school resource officer. I just wanted to make the point that it seems like we get into these things with the school district and they should be paying their, their, it's all, it's all taxpayer money, but they should be covering up the school district's budget, the proper amount. And what, what is happening here is that we're being really conservative for them. And so what that does is, is the city's now, gonna be at least $40,000 probably, that's probably gonna be more than that, more out of pocket. And, you know, like everybody else talks about, resources are always limited. You know, what we can do with the $40,000 and then, and then look at what, you know, for example, reserve funds are in, in the city versus reserve funds in the school districts. And I think it's, really, they should be paying a higher number. Having said that, I'm not going to oppose it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what we were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that Alderman Curry brought up the fact that it's still taxpayer money, but the thing also that we're number is the fact that the city of McHenry's district is so big and the schools district is so big, so when the more that the city takes and adds to the funding of the school, it's the taxpayers of the city of McHenry that pay for that, for the entire benefit of, of all the school kids in the entire school district, which is much larger and way outside of the realm of what just the city of McHenry is. So, just food for thought, not, not at all. And I, and I, and I don't know if, do we need to go that far out into 2024, considering, you know, there's gonna be a lot of issues that are gonna go on with, with the passing of the referendum that the school's got and, you know, just traffic alone is gonna change significantly there, figuring what they're talking about as far as the sophomore, juniors, seniors and all that. I just think to some extent, and I know every time the chief probably has to negotiate, it probably drives him crazy because there's so many different things he's gotta negotiate, but, you know, I'd, I'd rather see a shorter term of maybe three years rather than five. Food for thought.
Any other comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Is this table that we're looking at, that's, that's an estimated table, right? Is that not, is that the, what we pay actual, or how will that change when we're looking at actual costs?
Just to answer two questions. So the, the term of the agreement can be canceled at any time, so although it is a five-year agreement, at some point, something changes financially with the city or with the school district, three years into this agreement, providing some notice with some liability on the school district only, they can cancel this agreement. They would be responsible for the funding for that remainder of that fiscal school year back to the city of McHenry, but, and we could cancel at any given time as well if there was some type of, the five-year mark was the, that's traditionally what we had done with past SRO agreements, just because we negotiated quite a few different intergovernmental agreements on the site. It allows us to have some stability in that, but still allows us to have an out. As far as the chart goes, the, the dollar amounts listed for District 156, those are the dollar amounts that we charged. The dollar amounts listed for the city's annual responsibility, those are estimates. So just like Alderman Curry said, it is much more complex than traditionally what you're seeing in this, in this agreement and the fact that the 70/30 split is, is a baseline for how we calculated it out and then we added 3% every year on top of that. And that, and whether or not that accounts for the actual cost is, you know, each year is an unknown to a certain degree. But we didn't necessarily negotiate the 70/30 split based upon raw numbers of how much percentage of time in a, in the calendar year is that officer in the school versus back here working on the road either. That was our baseline that we started with. We see a value, how do you wanna put the dollar amount to that value in just having a police officer in the school on any given day? There's a value to the city of McHenry above and beyond what the school district pays. What that value is, you know, you can't place a number on that.
Alderman Curry?
Yes, I certainly agree with that. There's a value to all of us for that. Also a value, a great value to the school district itself. So, you know, the cap, it mentions in here that the cap, the city in 156 agreed to finally pay, the payment structure, the cap. Well, understand that cap is a cap on the city. Your arms, your hands up.
District, district.
Restate it. Cap on the district.
Yes.
What they pay. What the city pays is gonna be whatever it is.
Whatever's left.
If, if, if the dollars go up way higher than what I even calculated, we are holding the bag up as far as the amount.
Right.
And I just don't think, I don't know how the negotiation or whatever went, but maybe we just presented it this way and they, they just accept it. But I think that if there was any, any pushback, I think that the school district ought to be ashamed of themselves if, if that's the case, because they should be stepping up and paying the actual cost. You know, it would be better for the structure that, you know, we use the conservative number, you know, I say, you know, maybe even 5% and then, and then, hey, you know what, if it's, if it's more, we'll calculate that and we'll, we'll charge you less the following year or whatever. I mean, we'll give it back, in other words, but the way it's structured now, they just pay the one number and we pick up the rest. Regardless of how many days that officer is actually in this, or those officers are actually in this school or not in this school.
Any other questions, council? Alderman Condon?
Well, I was gonna point out some of the things that Chief mentioned, just the value, and I know that Alderman Curry isn't debating that, but I guess I see that that's why it's so important, is because the entire community benefits from having the resource officer there. I, I know having, having my kids there when there was school resource officers, honestly, I felt safer. Not that, that, that anything is, you know, I think was scary about being there, but going on in the high schools, but the, the fact of the matter is that potentially at any given moment it can, and how many crises do we hear across the country? Thank goodness, we haven't had those type of tragedies, but I, I appreciate Alderman Curry pointing out that difference and I guess maybe the thing that we can do now is keep track on what is the difference that we're absorbing going forward. I don't know if you have that information from the past, but, but certainly tracking that moving forward and if, and have that be a part of the discussion in five years.
And just, just so council knows, so although again, like I said, we did not negotiate this contract in the past or this current one based on trying to establish a true 70/30 split of the actual man-hours that were in, in benefits that we were trying to cover. The 70/30 split was what was a reasonable number to try to work with as far as who's gonna be responsible for paying for these positions. That's all that was at that point. But even when we look at it and we look at it in detail, the, the thing that changed, you know, in the previous contract, we were at 67%. So technically, that officer wanted me to break down every minute of the day that they spent in the school versus here at the police department. They were at the school 67% of their work year and they were here for the remainder, not 70/30, but 67. What changed was last year, we, the school district changed in the fact that their summer school took off. So even last year, we did it for a limited period of time, just a few weeks, but we learned that their attendance at summer school is through the roof. So we now, last year we saw over 700 students at West Campus during summer school. That might as well be normal school at that point. That's not the traditional summer school that most people are used to, to seeing. This year, they're anticipating those numbers might rise to as much as 900. And we felt, on our end, we felt it was important to make sure we had a police officer in here. So as we started that last year, we wanted to make sure during the negotiations this year was that, that was covered, that we would provide that. That basically puts one SRO for 30 additional working days in that high school. So then one SRO ends up being the 67%, the other one ends up being 78. So the balance out ends up being a 70/75, so one position is a 5% increase, which for the first year, to give you a rudimentary numbers, is $5,500 with benefits and salary. I'll mortise that out over, over the term of the contract for five years with the 3% raise. I'm not sure it was quite 40,000, but, you know, I would have to do the math with Carolyn on that. But again, that's not how we figured this contract when we negotiated.
Thanks, Jim. Any other comments, questions?
No? Alderman Schaefer? Sorry, I would, I do agree with Alderwoman Condon that probably on the annual review of what the actual costs are, we'll look at that, 'cause sometimes I know, I'm sure it's probably somewhere, but pull it out so we can see it kinda thing and, and just review it, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Santee? Yeah, just, and to follow up that, just because of, you mentioned Chief, that either, either side could cancel out of this?
Correct.
Okay. Because if, yeah.
The term, the term of the agreement section.
Yeah, okay, because if, if the numbers, you know, start swinging a little bit too much, then we might wanna, depending on to which side called, or they can call us back to the table in regards to making it more mutually beneficial, 'cause we are, we don't know what the exact costs are, but we are absorbing something there that is in our estimates. We're not sure until we get to those years and then we'll be able to figure those out. And if they start looking maybe a little bit too much on our end, then we may want to, yeah, bring it up once again and, and discuss it, possibly make some adjustments down the road. That's all I have, thank you.
Any others? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, Chief, on, on the average, how many years' experience do our officers that are usually in that position have?
Normally, our younger officers. Also, Schaefer was the first, the last one we just put in. Got right around two and a half years, somewhere two and a half, three years on the job. The younger officers acclimate better to the school, plus they're, they're easier, honestly, for the school district to train on their end for the, for their needs as well, so.
Right, so we're dealing with a one-year salary here that we're talking about, but in most cases, it's two, three or four possible years that officer has, which escalates the pay as well.
And, and again, I, I can't stress enough that this, from the perception of how we negotiated this contract and the past three SRO contracts, we've always had the 70/30 split. And the 70/30 split was, was never based on true actuals. It was, 'cause we place a value on that police officer being in that school, that's above and beyond what they're paying. If I had to put a police officer, if they ran out of funding tomorrow, I would be back in front of Council doing my best to justify why we need to keep those two officers in those schools and pay the full bill. They, they provide us intelligence, all the time reference unrelated school activities but other criminal investigations outside of the school altogether. There's a value to that. You know, above and beyond the school safety factor and the educational environment, the relationships they build with the children, they pay dividends to us in our patrol division and our tech division, totally unrelated stuff, and there's a value to that.
But again, Chief, I don't think it's, anybody on the Council's talking about whether this program is worthy or not, and I think we'd all agree it is. I think it's just the fact that we want to be, you know, responsible as far as physically responsible to our constituents, that we are doing the best we have as, as far as that we're not paying our share. I think that was the only concern. I mean, definitely, I can remember when this first was accepted and I remember talking to the first resource officer, it was amazing, the education you get by, by talking to one of them after about five or six months in the school. So it is definitely an excellent program. It's just like I said, you know, you know, we want to look at it for two or three years, and I would just assume having to work as a three-year program that, you know, we'd be reviewing it automatically at another two and a half year rather than, you know, somebody says, well, wait a minute, you know, it's well off kilter. And it's going to look off kilter because of the fact that our, our salaries are up right off the bat, because we got a two and a half year officer versus the one year that we're looking at, so. And you'd hate for somebody to start jumping up and down and saying, oh, look at how, how fast it got out of hand, because it really isn't. It's just the fact that the first year that you reported is going to show a little bit more of an off-balance because of that. I guess you, either way that the Council goes under discussions, you know, I think we need to move forward with it tonight no matter what, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? All right, going back to Council, any other questions, comments? Okay, clear. Please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahalik?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is the action items. Six A is regarding an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a property tax abatement agreement between the city of McHenry and BPI Incorporated. Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. In recently having discussions with Break Parts, they're located at forty-four hundred by Parkway, they're contemplating relocating their research and development facility from Winchester, Kentucky. That's their only research and development facility that they currently have. The sixteen hundred industrial drive in, in McHenry across from the Public Works Facility. Break Parts would make a four million dollar investment in the building and equipment to relocate their R and D facility, and in order to make it more attractive for them to do this, staff is proposing a property tax abatement. There's an agreement in front of you, we could go to finance and personnel committee with their recommendation and ask for your consideration this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I'm going to turn it over to Council for any questions, comments regarding this item. Alderman.
The comment I'm going to make is, I remember one of my aunts were informed back in the mid-seventies, part-time, and they'd been a fixture here at McHenry, I don't even know when they first opened up, but you know that they've been here well over forty-five years, fifty years, and it's a lot to say that we want to support businesses that have supported the city for all of years. I'm kind of excited about the fact that they're willing to break their operation to us rather than keeping it split like that. I hate giving up incentives, but in this case I think it's well worth it.
Alderman Condon?
I think Alderman Glab said everything I was going to say as well, but I, I too seen, you know, they've been a great member of the community and that they felt that this was the place for them to, I mean, it could have gone the other way around, right? They could have went down there. So, I think it's great that they're moving everything here and really excited to, you know, have them expand here. I'm also not crazy about the incentives, but in the long run, we've benefited, so we're glad.
Alderman.
Totally agree. When they came to the finance committee, obviously they have a strong history here and, and it's, it's been all positive, and, and with this change or with this movement too, the positions that are coming with this movement is going to be higher-paying positions, engineering-level positions, and I believe, I think they said there were seventy-five positions, but some are coming, some aren't, but that will also open up, I think, an addition to twenty-five, thirty people here for positions as well, so I think that's also part of it when we look at those incentives to not only move a facility here, move a, a part of your facility here, but also job creation. So I, I totally agree with doing this too, and agree with everything that's been said so far too as well.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Chime in on all of that that everybody said. I will point out too that this, as, as, I know we all get a little concerned about some of these incentives, but as, as incentives goes, this, this one's pretty, pretty economical for the city. I mean, we're looking at a maximum of twelve thousand annually, and, and that's only if, so they're going to do an investment of four million dollars, but really it's only what the township assessor decides that the building is worth at the end of that, and generally you put four million dollars into some, and that's going to actually increase the value of the building by four, so it's probably going to actually be less than, than the number that's in here. So it's, from a city standpoint, it's kind of, it was kind of a no-brainer in the finance committee.
Thank you.
I had one point of clarification, I'm sure Alderman Curry caught this, but he's being nice. Paragraph three steps on itself a little bit, so we're going to clean it up. It's just the first couple of lines where the abatement's actually referenced, there's a double, some double wording there, but we'll clean it up tomorrow and maybe bring in Exhibit B, which is the thirteen thousand dollar figure, and put it right into that paragraph. We don't need an exhibit for that. It's just, it'll say the same thing. We'll take care of that tomorrow if it passes.
Any other questions, comments by Council? I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment on this item? See none? This time, looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Curry?
I'll move that we approve the, the ordinance and the packet with the changes that Attorney McRobb just mentioned, and authorize the mayor's execution of the property tax abatement agreement between the city and BPI.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Shaffer?
Second.
Any other last comments, questions? Clear, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahalik?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is six B is regarding an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of an incentive agreement between the city of McHenry and Ricky Rockets. Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. In October twenty sixteen, the city council approved a development and economic incentive agreement with Bluestone Single-Tentant Properties LLC to offset extraordinary development expenses for the development of a projected fifteen million dollar fueling center and retail development, including the extension of the city's water main approximately one half mile for a property generally located at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Road and Route one twenty. That agreement has expired. At this time, Council was being asked to enter into a new agreement, essentially identical terms for the same property. A letter is attached, attached from Mike McKinnon, who is here in the audience, of Bluestone Properties, explaining the changes from the Ricky Rockets brand to, which would now be the Thornton's brand. Council will recall that the developer initially requested one point five million dollars in sales tax instead of rebates over a twenty-year period. However, the council agreed to an agreement worth no more than one million dollars in incentives. There's basically, they're going from the Ricky Rockets fueling brand to the Thornton's brand, and there's four changes in this, this, the site plan. The first is the number of pumps. There were seven pumps, now there are proposed to be ten pumps with Thornton's. The C store, the convenience store, was eighty-four hundred square feet, now it's decreasing size to about fifty-five hundred square feet. The eighteen hundred square feet of retail, which was attached to the convenience store, is no longer, is no longer being proposed, and a bypass lane has been added to the diesel fueling area. The retail building to the west is, there's no change to that. So that's still as-is. So those were the four changes being proposed, and as I said, Mike McKinnon with Bluestone Single-Tentant Properties is in the audience. If you have any questions as well, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions, comments by Council? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, and I was going to ask about the western retail area, but, because it's not shown on the new site plan, so you're just showing one of the differences on that?
Yeah, it is cut off only because it's not affected. So I was just showing what was affected.
All of that is going to be built at the same time. In other words, the retail area to the west, which is kind of a separate building, it's a separate issue, it's really not attached to the fueling at all. In fact, it's the, it's west of the truck area and west of the retention pond, so is that, I guess I'm looking for assurance that it's all going to get built at the same time at the same time.
Yeah, correct. My name is Mike McKinnon, Bluestone Single-Tentant Properties. Correct, so the, what, we've entered into agreement with Thornton's. They're going to be leasing the fuel center for the next twenty years with thirty years of extensions, which they always execute, so fifty years basically. Concurrent with all of the construction for the Thornton's, the retail center will be constructed as well.
Well, just one more question. We're common, I guess. So we're going to reduce, to me, the convenience and the retail, basically, it's all retail, but, so we're reducing roughly about five thousand square feet or over five thousand square feet of retail convenience area, correct?
Right, so the, the Ricky Rockets plan was eighty-four hundred square feet of convenience store space, and then they had a, we call it the sidecar retail space to it next door to it, about eighteen hundred square feet.
And we're still requesting three liquor licenses?
Oh.
Yes. The change, the request. Now that's not what they originally got?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is.
There's no change to that.
No, they got three gaming, because one was going to be a truck stop, they don't need a liquor license for the game, for the truck stop.
Correct, correct. You don't need, you do not need a liquor license for.
Oh, you don't need automatic.
That's correct. That's correct.
But, but the bottom line is you want three gaming areas.
Correct, one would be in the, the fuel center, and then two would be in the retail center. Correct.
Even though the retail center is now, oh, the westernmost retail center.
Correct.
So you're talking two gaming areas there.
Well, we're working with restaurant spaces, you know, not necessarily the gaming cafes, because we've had those discussions. So we're, we're working with, you know, larger restaurants to take, to utilize those gaming licenses.
I'm going to let somebody else answer.
Alderman Condon?
I'm sorry, but I have a problem with that. I have no problem, obviously you, you're entitled to the one at your convenience store.
Truck stop.
Area, truck stop area, right. The convenience, or the retail area is where I have the problem granting the liquor licenses, because to me that needs to be attached with what is, what are we approving? And we don't know what we're approving, that's just like giving you a blank check.
Well, the liquor license still needs to come for the liquor commissioner. It's, it's not just, it's, it's not an automatic license.
I'm quite aware of that, I've been on the Council a long time, but thank you. I'm aware of how that works. That said, I still feel like it's giving you a blank check. Retail could be a clothing store. Clothing store's not going to get a liquor license. They don't need it. They're not going to get it. I feel very strongly about not approving something that I am not fully given the, all the information that I need to make a reasonable decision. That doesn't mean that, that a restaurant wouldn't come in and I wouldn't approve that liquor license, but then I know exactly what I'm approving. Here I do not, so I, I am having a very hard time. I haven't heard anything that's changed my mind so far, and I, I hear reservation from Alderman Curry as well, so that would be a stumbling block for me. The rest of the proposals can find me.
Alderman Shaffer?
I had two things I wanted clarification on. One pertains to what Alderman Condon was speaking about, but the, the questioning about if we approve a liquor license for the two retail locations without knowing what they are, those, the state statutes on the gaming licenses and stuff would still apply to that? We would still have those liquor licenses out there, correct? Meaning, they would still at some point have to come back to this Council and tell us what those liquor licenses were being used for, or no? That's what I need to know, clarify on.
Right, right now the agreement says three liquor licenses, the last agreement said three liquor licenses for restaurant or gaming cafe, and along with the truck stop. Yeah, I have it right in front of me, I took it from Doug, so he doesn't have the exact language, but again, this is what was previous and, and proposed here, just to clarify for everybody. Subject to compliance with all applicable city ordinances following approval of this agreement, the city shall issue three liquor licenses for the subject property for convenience, any restaurants and/or game, game cafe located on the subject property. Each license will give a class which qualifies each occupant from a liquor license standpoint to acquire a group video game licenses. That's on page fifteen of the memo.
Some where we got snookered, because we were under the impression, I think everybody was, that they were going to, what we approved was three gaming and one was going to be the truck stop.
Yeah, and that, that's all we need. We, we just need, we need a package mirror in line for the convenience store, you know, consistent with everyone else in town, and then two licenses for the retail center.
So your plan is not to have gaming in the truck stop?
You, you do not need a liquor, you don't need a port on premise.
Right, yeah, well that, my second part of that question is in regards to Thornton's. Do you know of any other locations where they have gaming in their facilities today?
Yeah, they have quite a few. You know, the, they're, they're a little slow on the uptake back going to the video gaming, so they're, they're currently in the process of where it's available to renovate their existing units.
Yeah, I just, I utilize them quite a bit, I just haven't seen any in the whole.
Yeah, I, I'm, in Lake, in, you know, Lake, McHenry County's.
I think Island Lake might have it, but.
I, Lake does have.
Island Lake, they've put it in Waukegan. They're, they're, they're slowly transforming their existing units to incorporate it.
And is this footprint for the gas station going to be similar to what's in Island Lake and Lake More? Is Lake, Lake More has that ten-pump setup, I think?
Correct, no, the, Lake More is a forty-four hundred square foot building, this is a fifty-five hundred square foot building. They believe there're going, there's going to be more inside sales, plus to accommodate the, the gaming room.
Yeah, they don't have gaming in Lake More right now. So going back to the original question then, do we, as it reads today, are we keeping it the same, or it hasn't been determined yet?
It was the same.
This is proposed. The language in, in the agreement, this proposed agreement is the same language it was in the old agreement.
And just to be clear, it's three liquor licenses plus the trucking? That's what it says?
No.
No.
It's two. It's two plus the trucking.
That's not what this says, it's just three liquor licenses.
Yeah, because initially there was some sort of gaming establishment planned for that, the sidecar retail next to the convenience store, and that's, you know, that's no longer.
Is this sidecar going to be vacant land?
No, I was meaning if you like, like.
So you want two liquor licenses plus the trucking for gaming?
Two on-premise consumption licenses and one package.
One package of one or four.
Two four and one package.
Yeah. So that would be different than what the languages I just read.
That's correct, because before there was three, three on-premise consumption licenses.
Because, because you just said one was for the eighteen hundred square foot site, so you don't need that.
And now we're done?
Yeah, yeah. So we're actually moving more. So it says three, plus they would have the convenience store, they actually only need two plus the convenience. So they're going down.
And we should clarify, it's for the truck stop, because we keep saying.
Yeah.
Convenience store, we're not allowing convenience stores to have gaming at this point in McHenry, have we?
No.
Let's take the, let's take four. Not convenience stores.
It's a truck stop.
It qualifies as a.
It qualifies, she tried to go to the state statute.
Yes. It's not a convenience store. It's a totally separate thing.
Alderman?
Okay, just for clarification, again, using your terminology, because I, the truck stop gets one. So they're asking for two more, uh, in that separate building.
Retail.
Retail building. And that's where my problem is, because when we, the Ricky Rockets, they had, they mapped out and, and were telling us what was going in, proposal. We're not getting that.
It, it, it's still, it's, it's still owned by Ricky Rockets. The retail center's still being built by the same, um. It's just the fueling side is being run by Thorntons now.
And I think he just stated restaurant. He didn't tell us what.
The, the, no, the one was a ga, a gaming.
Cafe.
Cafe.
Correct, nothing, nothing has changed, other than the fueling centers being leased by Thorntons. Everything else is owned by Ricky Rockets.
Again, it is different in the fact that, that it's two different Thorntons and Ricky Rockets. To me, that's different. I, I'm not saying I wouldn't approve it. I believe they need to come back for it when we know what's going in there. And I don't understand what the big deal is about that. I mean, why, they have to come forward anyway, um, so. I don't see what the big deal is, just allowing the one that you're entitled to, and letting whatever business is gonna come in, apply for it as they come in, because then the council is fully aware of what they're voting on. Again, this is a blank page we're voting on. Concept maybe, but we don't know.
Alderman Santi? Alderman Santi?
Good, kind of work with, yeah, Alderman Condon in regards to this, and just add to this, is that it was first passed in October twenty sixteen, okay? Twenty nineteen. In this length of time, we've had multiple gaming discussions. Uh, I, I'm not speaking for the other six people to my left, but I think there's been some thought process that adjusted where it's just not, I'm wanting check, or just, yeah, go ahead, let's, let's just do it. And something in this proposal tonight in front of us, I don't know how else to say it, it just, it just sniffs out, uh, a gaming parlor. And we've really expressed that terminology where it's a negative now in the municipality. And we're not looking for that. Now, if there is a concept that comes across our desk that says two restaurants, and offense here to the gaming parlor, but they're legitimate restaurants, um, yeah, I'd be willing to look at that and, and, and be very open to that. But it, and, and you know what? And just to say it this way, if it comes back and it isn't what we're looking for, um, that liquor license, that gaming license, that's an annual thing. You know, I mean, a portion of that, this square footage could be out of business pretty quickly, um, if it, if it goes down that line. Um, and Mike, and the sidecars, what's in the sidecar? I mean, I know it, it says sidecar. I'm sorry, that's where I get, that's where it comes back to me, is being a gaming parlor.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's correct. The sidecar was the retail space adjusted to the convenience store. Correct. So, I, I'm hearing what you have to say. Well, why don't we work with staff? Uh, and I think we could develop some language, well, maybe you'll cross, maybe, maybe not, that could. I, because I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I think they're valid concerns. Uh, and this, and I apologize, this, uh, this is first I'm hearing, uh, as we discussed, so. Uh, if I, if I could, if I could offer that, I think maybe we could work on some language that would reasonably work for both the city and for, uh, Ricky Rockets as well.
And Mike, you obviously know about the gaming situation here, the parlors, and we've had conversations, so, um, I think if there's something that we can put in there that restricts or kind of gives some guidelines.
Right, right, I think we, I think.
Would be good on both sides of the menu, and we could work out something on that side.
Would there be any objection to approving tonight the, um, the four points and just the liquor license that was, that they're entitled to with the truck stop? Because to me, they're two different.
Are you on fire? We've been doing this for a long time. Do you have time for another couple of weeks to come back?
Yeah, I, we have, we have time to come back. Uh, you know, right now, uh, Thorntons, they're preparing their final engineering plans. Uh, we're, we're trying to figure out whether, uh, there's any other onsite work, uh, but.
This is really a sensitive subject. I don't think you should leave it with staff, or me.
Well, I, I guess I'm sensitive to time, too.
Right. Right, you know, Thorntons, yeah, Thorntons is, you know, they're chomping at the bit, because obviously that water main extension is a pretty sensitive project. And.
Next to me.
And, well, and we have the history, so.
Okay.
The, it's all.
Can we get this done? Can we get it back on the next agenda? Yeah, we'll get it done. We just need a day, one day to talk about it.
That's fine. You understand what I.
You'll get it. That'll find me.
Alderman?
Yeah, just for a little bit more clarity, uh, reading some of this. All right. It states that you would not meet the definition of a truck stop to the state. This site does not meet the state statute's definition of a truck stop definition below, and so the developer will offer video games within the convenience center.
What do you read?
Does meet.
Yeah, mine does, too.
Page three.
Analysis?
This site does meet the state statute.
Eighty-five.
Page fifty-five.
The site does meet, it does meet the state's definition.
Oh, does meet, okay. So, all right, so, and the convenience center is within the truck stop?
Correct, the convenience center is the primary authorities building.
Does meet, okay. Because that was one of the three licenses, right? Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't adding a condition or something. Okay. No, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Alderman?
Yeah, just a couple more comments. Echoing some of what council member Condon mentioned, that, you know, we like to have a certainty on what we're, what we're looking at. When I look at this, I see that, you know, we originally had, uh, almost nineteen thousand square feet of retail and convenience store, so retail's a move and all of that. And we're reducing it by thirty percent, and yet we still want to have three gaming places. I'm, I'm, you know, from here, I'm not, I can tell you right now, I'm not going for it. So, you know, the truck stop one, obviously, the state controls that. Not much we're going to do if we allow it to be built, and so, so obviously, the truck stop is gonna happen. But in, in this retail center, I might, I might go along with a restaurant that had gaming in it. I'm not gonna go along with a video gaming parlor. You know, I was, I was hesitant on voting on this in October of two thousand sixteen, and I'm more knowledgeable now than I was then. And I've, this is a vote that I regretted for some time, because I, I was mistaken, but I was under the impression at that time that we were talking about some. I knew it was gonna be a small place, but I was thinking it was more of a local type place, like some of these other ones that we've had come into town. And then, lo and behold, like, a few months later, we find out it's Stella's that was gonna come in there, and we had just rejected a Stella's location in the city of McHenry. And then it turned around and said, oh, well, it's gonna be Stella's that goes in there. It's like, what is going on? So I have to say, I don't come from, from a very good frame of mind right now. And I think a number of us are getting pretty down on anything that's never our definition of a video gaming parlor. So just so everybody knows where we're kind of coming from. But I see, you dropped, you dropped your, your, quote, quote, business, your, your retail business by thirty percent, and you still want, you know, you just want a gambling mecca. And, and if you were here at the last meeting, you would have heard me say some things like, you know, we're, we're, we're twelfth or thirteenth in the state in the number of gaming, or actually, well, they did it on money, but it follows, the number of gaming locations, and we're eightieth in population. So we could, if I do the math, we could probably be number one in the state in terms of per capita. So I personally, not really interested in adding any, but I know we approved this before. Now you're coming back with changes. I had a chance to take another look at it.
Alderman Shaffer?
Um, just to, to ask you a question, too, and clear up something, too. So if, if, if a Jersey Mike's wants to be one of those locations in the, as a restaurant, are you just gonna say no, because you want facilities that have gaming?
No, there's sufficient room in the retail center for other uses.
Oh, so, but I'm saying, you're, you're keeping those two open for gaming-only facilities?
They have, they're, they're, it's eligible for, for two of the uses that have gaming, correct?
I, my, my only clarification was that you, would you turn down somebody if it wasn't a non-gaming?
No, there's gonna be non-gaming retailers within the retail center.
You're saying it's eighty percent full, and you got no space, so you're, you're gonna hold out?
You're gonna hold out just for a gamey.
I mean, they're.
Same wish there. I mean, I can't think, I, I can't interrupt that.
And then, my second question is, is, is Bluestone and Ricky Rockets the same company?
They are not.
But, and Ricky Rockets owner has his own gaming company as well?
No, Ricky Rockets does not own its own gaming.
The, the owner of Ricky Rockets doesn't have a gaming team?
Right, so the, so Hyde, uh, Rick Hyner owns Gold Rush Gaming, which is a video gaming, uh, video terminal operator. Uh, Ricky Rockets is the entity that owns the land. Uh, see, and Bluestone, where, where is the development manager? We have no ownership interest in the land.
I just wanted that to be clarified for council as well, too, that they know.
Correct.
That he's also involved.
Alderman?
Yeah, just for council clarification, from what I recall, also in the discussions, Ricky Rockets, when they presented that to us way back when, was just, uh, more than anything else, that they had a regular business plan, and those three video gaming concessions were planned in there. So your concern as far as when they pass something up because of video gaming, while they had figured the video gaming in. So needless to say, yes, they're gonna reserve spots for that video gaming, I'm sure, because that's part of the business plan that they had in.
That's the one. Um, and what I'd like to do is, I think what council is saying is, uh, make a motion that we table this item until further discussion with staff and, and, um, just, uh, and then to come back to, um, council for review and discussion and potential approval.
So I'm looking for a motion to table this item?
I just made a motion first.
Second.
Second problem.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that maybe, uh, what we need is, is, uh, after they've had discussions with the developer, possibly send us some information, uh, for us to give you comments back, rather than it coming back to council. You know, at least if there's certain aldermen that have major concerns or something, then at least that can at least be looked at ahead of time, rather than.
Right.
All of, all of this, uh, and then we're just gonna point up right back where we are again. At least we'll know what everybody's major concerns are.
Alderman Santi?
Real quick, Mike, does Bluestone have any long-term investments in any of the properties that we're, that we're looking at? Any, any of that land? Any, any of the buildings, anything? You're just developing it, and at a certain point, you're off it?
Correct, we're, we're working on it, is the answer for that.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh, we're working with Mr. Hyner on, uh, having interest on the Thorntons portion of it. Uh, but there, there, as if there's no, there's, there's never been a napkin sketch at this point.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
They're gonna want us, so. I'm working for free tonight, so.
Perfect. Goes for some of us in the.
That's, that's.
So, Alderman Curry?
I, I just wanna clarify, the, the motion we have, does it have a date? So we're gonna table till when?
Next to me.
April first. So we'll bring it back April first. Um, thank you. Do you have time tomorrow to have a discussion over the phone?
Yes.
Doug, why don't you set that up? Yeah, I'm leaving for a week, so let us discuss tomorrow, and then, at least there's some things getting done.
Sure.
Bye. Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Bye, please call the roll. Thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahanick?
Yes. Thank you, council. Uh, the next item on the agenda is six C, uh, regarding consideration of a recommendation by the Finance and Personnel Committee to eliminate McHenry Municipal Vehicle Sticker Program. Carolyn, can you go ahead and present this item, please?
Thank you. The purpose of this agenda item is for city council consideration regarding the elimination of the municipal vehicle sticker program. This topic was discussed in two thousand eighteen and again at our previous Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, and they unanimously approve forwarding a recommendation to eliminate the program to the city council. Since this item will impact the revenues and expenses for the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, it is being included for action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, any discussion, comments, questions? Alderman Curry?
Well, I just wanna make a comment, and, yes, Director Lynch mentioned, we've, we've talked about it several times in the Finance Committee, um, and, and we unanimously making a recommendation to the rest of council to eliminate this program. It comes down to a couple of things, I think, for us, is that, first of all, there, there's revenue, but there's also an expense associated with it, which you see in your packets. You know, and it's not a huge amount of money, certainly money, certainly revenue, that, that we're, we're giving up. But, uh, it also comes down to, uh, I guess, at least, I, I term it as a fairness issue. We've got a fair sizable percentage of, of people who do not comply. We struggle with trying to get compliance. It's difficult for, especially if, for example, now at night, you don't really want police officers trying to be out on the hot side of the highway trying to enforce this, this, and, and, and first, it's not a, it's not an item, correct if I'm wrong to you, but it's not an item you can just enforce by itself.
Correct. It's not reasonable grounds for a traffic stop.
Right. So it's, you're doing it when you, when you do another stop. And they do do a number of enforcement actions, but it just comes down to, to, we've got, you know, the people are compliant, are having to pay, and the people who aren't compliant are, in large part, getting away with it. And so it's not a huge amount of revenue, and we've certainly offset way more than that just by recent actions of the council. So I recommend certainly that we, uh, go forward with this.
Thank you, Alderman Curry.
Alderman Condon?
I think that this has been, um, a topic of discussion for the entire length of time I've been on the council, so, well over a decade. And, um, and, and that's always been the debate, you know, the, yes, it's revenue, but the enforcement isn't, doesn't allow it to be fair, because there's so many out there who are not getting it. And, and another example of, um, really wasted, um, expenditures. For example, last year, my, I owned, the title was in my name for a car that my son drove, who lived in Seattle. So it was printed and sent to us, but it's not here. Another time, um, my son, again, we owned the car, but he was in South Carolina. So that wasn't. And then, um, another, this was three in a row. What?
Said you're admitting everything.
Booker T, didn't have to. Statute of limitations or something.
Thank you. And, and then we had a car that we sold, and so, so, eh, the bottom line, three were printed, and none, we weren't paying for any of those three. We paid for the two cars that we owned, and we did pay for those two.
We're parking overnight here anyway, so you're good.
Right, well, but I paid for our cars, but there were three others that were sent to us that we didn't own, so it was a waste of money of printing. So, um, the, and, and just the, the booking fee for this has been ridiculous, and, so I, I'm glad to see it go. I, I think this is gonna be a. go, I, I think this is gonna be a win for the community.
Thank you. Alvin Shaffer?
Um, I agree as well, it's difficult for me to, to pass up on any revenue streams because that is one, when you net it out, it's still a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars that could be, you know, an SRO officer or something, who knows, it could be, uh, the roads fixed, so, but I, my, my goal has always been to try and find some way to recapture that through other methods, and, and I see the, thank you, Carolyn, for putting that analysis together, I mean, I do see that there, I did think there was quite a few other people that still did it, and out of the, the thirty or so communities in the county that you did, I, there's still thirteen or, thirteen, I think, that still do it, but I, I would love to figure out a way to have that be incorporated somewhere else down the line, maybe with, uh, when we upgrade to some new software at some point, I know other communities do it through other billing methods, uh, to make it fair, and, um, you know, instead of having a twelve dollar fee, it's a ten dollar fee to every, to every home or something, and, and I don't know how we can do that, but I would like to maybe keep that as something to look at in the future, but, um, I have, in the committee, approve this and we'll approve it tonight as well.
Thank you. Alvin, then?
Yeah, the city sticker program has been butchered for years, um, I don't know exactly, I didn't look at the terminology just recently, uh, but from what I can recall, years back, it was, if a house, if a car is housed in the city of McHenry, or if it is registered to somebody at the city of McHenry, they pay for the city sticker. One of my biggest griefs about, um, city sticker money was just the fact that if you're use, if you're, if you're charging people for a vehicle sticker, then why isn't it going to the road program, it goes to the general fund? And therefore, you know what happens, and you see that not just here at the city, and probably not as much at the city as you might even see up at the state and everything else, when it goes to a general fund, it disappears. If you remember, uh, lottery tickets for the state, right? Opti two years ago, when they affirmed that, what happened? It's gonna go to the general fund, or, and, but it was going to pay for roads and for schools, and I, not just this state, I heard it in a lot of other states that said, and it goes to the general fund, and all of a sudden, the money comes out and everything, the projects that everybody wants, and it doesn't go to where it needs to go. And, uh, I'd really be fighting for this tonight vehemently, if I felt that this was taking money away from the street program, and it's not. I mean, maybe indirectly it is, but it's not, uh, steered directly to the road program. I think we do need to have some kind of better funding for, for, for roads and a constant yearly type of fund. But, uh, again, my biggest complaints that I've heard from constituents on anything else is, I've been buying stickers for thirty-seven years, and why is he that moved in three years ago, hasn't bought a sticker yet? And, I hate to get rid of an ordinance because we can't figure out a way to enforce it, but, uh, it's not like you're doing away with speed limits because you can't enforce speed limits, you know, as much as you'd like. Uh, again, it is a swell of revenue, uh, we are, we improved the, uh, uh, sales tax increase and all that, there is a, another revenue stream that will, uh, more than take over for what we lose here, and, uh, residents of the city of McHenry are the ones that are gonna save the money here. Those that have been honest and upfront over the years and bought the stickers, they're gonna save that, that few dollars, and, uh, hopefully will wind up to be a win-win situation in the long run.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone from the public that they can make a public comment?
Can I just ask one question then?
If you can come to the podium, state your name for public record, please.
My name is Conrad Reener. Um, the question I have, if you, I mean, I don't have a problem paying for the sticker, but the question I have is, what happens when you go up here to the garbage, to the, to the recycle? How are they gonna determine that? Once that gets out, how many people from out of town are gonna start coming to your, to your dump?
I can answer this, Director Schmidt's not here tonight, but, uh, he's had regular contact with Prairieland Disposal, and they pretty much are handling the yard waste pickup for most of the other, uh, regional areas as, as it is, and they're not concerned with picking up, they're not concerned at all about it. So if there was somebody else in line that didn't have a vehicle sticker, they're not gonna complain whatsoever about taking it.
Okay, that was just...
It's not gonna cost the city any more money.
Right, okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Alvin, then?
Yeah, what did you just say? It's not gonna cost the city any more money for what?
They're not concerned, yeah, they're not concerned about the influx.
I'm, I'm sorry, he's wrong in what he told you, and that is not a good philosophy, because see, the thing is, is when you take and you go out for proposals from these companies for waste pickup, they take everything into, uh, consideration, and the more, uh, yard waste that's picked up in tonnage at the park, it's more costly to them, so they will be looking at charging more for, for pickups because of that. And that's why, I know years ago, I, I, I used to push it, that we start checking the, uh, the city stickers. Actually, we had a city clerk that one time that was out there selling them on Saturday morning, for anybody that, I'm sorry...
We've enforced that every year. We've, we've enforced that every year. We, we've had CSO's up there on every Saturday enforcing that for newer shares now. Since we got Prairieland Disposal, they've been pretty clearly not, they're not concerned with it, but again, I would just refer you back to Director Schmidt.
But what I'm saying is, when you go to, for the next contract, all that history will wind up, they, they analyze that, whether it be Prairieland, Waste Management, whoever's going to make a proposal, they look at, uh, how much garbage was picked up at every, every, you know, at, at the houses, uh, how much was picked up at the yard waste, uh, how many bags were picked up at the curb site, so that's all figured out, so that when they do make their proposal, they actually have all the information of, of what, uh, it, the entire job entails.
We've had this conversation with them, uh, a few times, actually, that was one of our major concerns, but they're under, as far as what they're proposed, bringing in for waste, they were under that by large numbers, so they're, that's why they're not too worried about it.
That's not...
Well, should we have a city sticker, that's just a little dot that does, we're not charging, that every resident gets sent with their water bill? Or, or something to that nature?
We, we discussed that.
Or if they come in with a water bill, they get the sticker?
Yeah.
To put on the windshield, just so, you know, and again, a little dot or whatever, just to identify that they are a city resident, and maybe that's something that...
That's a separate discussion, I own that, we can...
Exactly, but I just...
Yeah, that's something that we've talked about.
Sure.
Then you eliminate it, and now you got a cost to it. I mean, you do, you've got a cost.
Good, for reaction, there's a reaction, just gotta figure that out.
Any other questions, Condon?
The chief has...
Oh, chief has something?
I wanna mention those parts of the code.
Oh, I would just say that if the council's looking to take a vote today, that their vote would include, uh, the removal of sections, 'cause there is, there is an ordinance is on, on vehicle stickers, so, which includes, uh, looks like section, or chapter thirteen dash one oh one through thirteen dash one ten. So if you're going to get rid of the sticker program, the motion should be to eliminate that section of the, uh, city ordinance.
Sorry, chief, what was that again?
Oh, then we're gonna need an ordinance.
All right, we'll have to come back.
You're right, an ordinance, authorizing the removal of these sections.
We'll come back, we'll come back, you can first.
Okay. All right, good. All right. I'm looking for a motion, uh, for items, uh, for item set, uh, six C, consideration of recommendation by the Finance and Personnel Committee to eliminate the McHenry Municipal Vehicle Sticker Program. Alvin Curry? I'll make that one. Thank you. Second, Alderman Condon? Uh, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahenick?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is discussion only item, uh, inclusion of Boom Creek dredging west of Green Street Bridge as part of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. Bill, can you please present this item?
Sure. So, we, obviously we've had, uh, the discussions about Boom Creek, uh, as it relates to the Fox Waterway and that project, uh, their jurisdiction ends at the Green Street Bridge, and so, what we do beyond that is, is something that we've had the internal discussions on, and I had an opportunity to meet with a contractor out there on site and have multiple discussions about what would that look like if we wanted to try and tackle that. So just for the Green Street Bridge to the Route One to Orange section, uh, which is probably the most unsightly when you're walking, when you're driving by there or down in that area, um, I think we've all seen it, it is an additional two hundred thousand dollars to dredge and truck it. Um, if we just wanted to dredge it, and this would be a mechanical dredge, uh, with a firm that has worked with the Fox Waterway a great deal, um, and, and it would probably be work, and probably it'll be work, and we would have to develop some specs and, and put it out to bid to do, um, but these, these are just ballpark estimates, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars if we just wanted to dredge it and we truck it ourselves after that point. Um, two hundred thousand dollars if you want to dredge it and truck it at the same time. So, and I, and I get that the, the discussion is probably much bigger than that, you know, if we dredge the, if we dredge the one part, working with the Fox Waterway, now we, you know, we do it, does it silt in quicker if we don't dredge the next part? Where does that silt come from? And, and I get that the discussion is probably bigger and further downstream, but these two areas are right in the middle of our downtown, and I think are worth at least having a discussion about.
Now, there was an item added last week as part of our Finance and Personnel meeting, 'cause Bill had gotten the, uh, the numbers in right before that meeting, or the end of the week before, when the information was already out, so, we just included it as kind of a miscellaneous discussion item. Because of the timing with the budget, thought we'd bring it to council as a discussion item to provide input on the staff, the council, uh, wants us to at least include the number, understanding we'll go out to bid on it, include the number as part of the budget, we can do that, um, if they choose not to, but still want us to, you know, investigate it or whatever, we can always come back and do a budget amendment as part of the budget, or if you choose not to tackle it this time, we can do that too. We at least wanted, uh, council, we have an opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you. Alvin, then?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I can remember as a kid, uh, when you came into McHenry for the summer months, uh, you know, I remember votes being, uh, past the one twenty bridge, um, however, I do remember back in the seventies when the city, uh, bought a dredger and dredged part of McCullough Lake, and how quickly it filled in, and my question's gonna be, is this, so many dredges, is, are they gonna have a guarantee that, okay, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be at least good for ten years? Or is it gonna fill back in and within a, a short period of time? And again, nobody wants to look at the entire system and how the entire system affects Boom Lagoon, and that means McCullough, uh, or, the Lake Le Park, uh, drained, come and silt. I don't think they have anywhere near the silt that Boom Creek moves in there, but there's a lot of movement that goes in, and that's why Boom Lagoon is, is filled in as it is. Now, again, you know, uh, the area out there off of, where the Big Bend is, is like, they took, they dug it out back in the sixties, uh, it started, uh, silt flowing downstream all the way to Boom Lagoon, so they, they put in a, a rock dam, and it held a lot of the silt back for a good, good many years, however, it, like a, a regular silt trap, it never got dug out, there's never been any maintenance, so now the silt is all built up to those rocks and, and overflowing, and now, so the silt's still coming down, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna be any engineer, but I, in some terms, I certainly agree with you, the problem is it's privately owned, it'd be nice to be able to just, you could hydraulically dredge that and disperse it in the farm, because they're right next to it, if we could get agreements or own the property, and, and maybe that does help solve the problem, but...
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is that we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars and in three years, uh, it's no longer useful because of, uh, the amount that's spilled back in?
I think it'll be more than three.
Who knows? You know, I would have never thought, I think if I remember right, McCullough Lake, and again, it wasn't a lake, but it was just a trench all the way across from, uh, the Polish Camp all the way to, uh, the, uh, Lake Le Park, the old Lake Le Park Beach, uh, it's twenty feet deep? And the silt filtered in that, that quickly, so, I don't know, and, and again, each body of water has a different, uh, system that we're, you know, and maybe it'll fill in faster, or maybe it won't fill in as, as fast, or maybe it won't hardly fill in at all, but, you know, before we spent two hundred thousand dollars, and so...
I will say, that as it relates to that particular section, and it, worth, I guess worth note for this portion, is when you look at relatively vacant land or, or land that's available for redevelopment, that's a prime area to be able to redevelop it, especially now that we control the parking lot on that side, um, the other land has been, uh, on the market for quite a long time, um, right next to Second Amendment, um, as well as , uh, the, the portion, I think the, the Mazanos own that, they also have that on the market, as far as I'm aware, so you have both sides of the creek that are, are prime redevelopment opportunities, not in, not in the current state, it's probably not, but it might help with that, I can't, again, I can't say for sure that it does or doesn't, but it would certainly be part of that conversation of any redevelopment of that area.
Now, if you're gonna, if you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars, have somebody dredge it, but we have to haul it away, what do we haul it away to? What's our cost?
Well, our cost is...
What are we limited to, as far as where we can take it to?
Well, if we're gonna spend two hundred thousand, we're not hauling it away, somebody else is, and they'll, then they'll have to deal with where it's gonna be hauled at, it's like we're doing on the other one, we're trucking that east of there, we're trucking that amount, that's a hundred and sixty thousand, it's already in the budget, proposed in the budget for the east part of that, so at two hundred thousand, they're hauling, they're doing the trucking and hauling it away someplace else.
Yes.
Right, that's correct. So can we, yeah, the question is, can we do it for under four...
I'm sorry.
Right? And it's a hundred and sixty with us trucking it?
Well, the prob, the problem before, from our side, and just some brief conversations that I have with Director Schmidt, is the timing wise, and now, when you mechanically dredge it, now you have this pile of spoils that's sitting right downtown, and that's not gonna track right to anybody, and we might be able to save some time, but the coordination of the two projects together, that's why this discussion is important, is if, if there is a trucking component, and being able to, especially with somebody that has a relationship, and, and again, we bid it, and wherever that lands, it lands, but when you can possibly utilize some of the, maybe the barge from the Fox Waterway that they pushed under the bridge, now that they just dredged it, makes it easier for that project to work. Getting the two, the two contractors to talk is, is always beneficial.
But if we looked at, if we dredge and if we haul it, uh, to save some money, are there areas, let's say, somewhere on the Peterson Farm, or a hole that the city has of, on a piece of property, that we could use some of that dredging?
That's what we did for the Bolt Lunch, it's exactly what we did for the Bolt Lunch, we dredged it out, we drove it around the corner, we're gonna...
It's gonna be a little each way, the way to our train flat, you know?
Um, so there's, I'm sure there's options, we haven't explored those fully until we have this discussion, that's the, I guess that's the purpose, to see where we're at, what council might think, maybe you don't wanna do it at all?
Alvin, then?
Do we know the condition on the seawall, especially on the south side?
Well, there's going, yeah, there's going to have to be some seawall repairs, uh, and that, that's another reason why there's some concern about using the geotubes and hydraulically dredging. Number one, there's quite a bit of debris in that area, and sort of in order to do that, it could be tough, but secondly, it was when you have the geotubes, which makes it easier to store in the water in that area, it does create a decent amount of hydraulic pressure that could put more pressure on those seawalls, um, and if they're not in the best shape, if we don't, you know, if, we don't know exactly what shape they're in, obviously there is one, one failing section, um, along landmark that needs to be repaired at some point. We, we don't know the exact status of those, but that was one of the reasons for the mechanical dredge, you can get the permit easier, the hydraulic pressure's not there on the shoreline, and there's not as big a concern with the seawall, um, with it dredged out, you know, with it dredged out, you can almost get equipment in there to pound that from, either from the shoreline or from, you know, pounding from the shoreline is easy on the northern side, but on the south side, getting equipment in there might be a little tougher, and so you might have to access that from the waterway and pound from that side. Again, that's all future speculation of what happens, but those are some of the things that went into account for our discussions of how we do it, or why we do it, or, we need things we need to take a look at.
Alvin Curry?
They're gonna start dredging for the other portion when...
Hopefully May first.
Okay, so, so I mean, we're having a discussion about, and I realize there's some concerns, but we're having a discussion about either a hundred and sixty or two hundred thousand dollars, and whether we put it in the budget, or whether we put it as a budget, or we do a budget amendment later. Reality is, I mean, the budget goes into a...
Reality is, I mean, the budget poses to affect May first. So I guess, you know, whether we wanna bring this back to the next meeting with some other information, but I think you got to build, if we're gonna do it, we gotta build the budget. No point in doing a budget amendment to a budget that you just put out in May first. You know, it just wouldn't make any sense. So that, that's just a practical thing about that. We should make a decision, then build it in the budget, and then go forward. I mean, we're being forced, timeline's been forced us to make the decision. Other, I've stopped center thinking until you guys, when somebody mentioned it wouldn't look very good downtown. I was thinking, oh, we just, you know, put up a sign that says free topsoil. People come take it. It'll be a great topsoil.
We tried it with our mulch. I always know it's as quick as we'd like it to go.
Didn't go, all right.
It goes, it just takes a while, that's all.
Alderman.
I just have a comment and a caution. When we do put this in, in our agendas and stuff, I think we should designate not just west of Green Street, because I did get one question for, thinking it was gonna go beyond one twenty bridge. So we should, should have it designated where it was stopping.
We have one twenty.
Because we know, we, you've all received questions and comments from the residents along Mill Stream and behind Grand Avenue and Church Street there. So once they, once they see that, they're thinking, excellent, my boat's going back in this summer, so.
They better start shoveling.
Yeah.
Over to Green Street.
Alderman.
I agree with Alderman Curry in regards to, let's look at this, let's get it in the budget if we, if we approve it. But let's, let's try to get a number. And move forward with, you know, the continuation of the dredging that's gonna go to Green Street Bridge and on Green Street to Route One Twenty Bridge. Well, we have, we have, and that's the number, that's the ballpark number, that gives us the placeholder to bid it, based on the information that we have, as if we wanna do it or not, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, so do we have time to do bids? Or not? Or is that, I mean, you gave us the numbers, I mean, we're gonna come back and see the same number in two weeks or four weeks? That's what we're looking at? It will be tight, but it depends, you know, we write those specs and, you know, I talk to the contractor, you know. We can, can we do a bid? Can, do we have time? It will be tight, but we could, we, we control what that bid period of time, what that bidding time is. We can say it's one week, one week. And you limit the amount of time that you have, our contract to respond on that. That's the, in the bottom bid, you might get back, that's the downside.
Are, are you, and the, the people that you've talked to already are the ones who are doing the project from?
No.
No?
Oh, okay. The Fox Waterway's doing from the mouth to Green Street. This contractor that I've talked to, he works with, works with the Fox Waterway all the time, and has that relationship. And so he was just one that I had, I was given as a contact.
So is the Fox Water, are they a capable person that could do this in conjunction with that section of?
They won't do that.
No?
There are way too many people out there asking for dredging.
Yeah.
This is really fortunate, we have them in right now.
Alderman.
Yeah, just a comment to Alderman Glav's comment earlier about how fast is the silt? I just, I find myself wondering if we don't have information associated with that from the studies that were done. And I guess the place to go would be to HR Green did a lot of that work. There may be information already on those, on how much silt was actually being carried in that water, because they would have had to have looked at some of that. I know we've done study, and prior to us, the county, it was the county, somebody in the state had done a study. So there may be some information on how, I don't know if that tells you how much drops out. Might tell you how much silt's being carried.
But that was Lake Wood Park that they did.
Yeah, but.
Not in the area, I mean, and Boone Creek was the feeder of the silt that Lake Wood Park.
But there's a whole watershed study that's been done. It's like, it's like, you know, a hundred pages thick or more. There may be information, and I don't know, I'm just saying that there may be information.
We can, we can see, we can see, just can, we can contact HR Green, or Troy can follow up on it also, to see if there's anything out there that would give us any indication of if we dredge to this level or whatever, we can calculate how fast it would fill back in, or how long it would stay, what I quote, navigable once we dredge it out. We could, we could look at that, we could try to find out if there's anything out there, without, you want a summer study?
No, no, I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying there may be information out there already. I don't know if we can draw conclusions from it or not, but I know there, I know there's a lot of study stuff that exists out there already.
Alderman.
In the back of my mind, it just hits me that, okay, if they dredge to just Green Street, how much of that silt that's built up on the other side of the bridge is going to fall into the part they dredge? And then I'm thinking, okay, so if we dredge that to one twenty, what about the rest of Boone Lagoon as it goes on the other side of one twenty? How much of that will fall in and fill in what's, what's being dredged?
Well, that's, that's exactly, I mean, that's exactly, it's how far do you go? Where's the, where's that momentum of the stream?
Exactly.
Slow down enough? And I'm not proposing this, so I hesitate to even say it. But if those residents did want to dredge that and tack onto this, we've, we've talked about before about this as an SSA. If we're mobilized, if you wanna, if you're a private homeowner, wanna do an SSA, or going to, the twelve or fifteen of you take on that responsibility, here's what the price could additionally be. We've talked about it before about that very scenario.
If you're taking this area down, then this area's gonna go there. So if you take this area down, then that area's gonna go there.
I don't, I don't.
Where does it stop?
I don't think that, that stream coming from Jewel, that has enough momentum. It's when it fans out. Again, I'm not an engineer, I didn't stay at the Holiday Express, anything like that. When it fans out, that's when that silt's gonna fall.
There's gotta be a point to where you have a lot less fallout, or possibilities of fallout, depending how far in you go. And maybe that's the determination that the city should have of how far we wanna go in before we say enough's enough, so that we don't, so we're not counterproductive.
I mean, as Parks Director, I like the idea of expanding Fox River Park, take on the pot, and then work with L B Anderson to disperse the silt into the field.
I mean, it'd be great if we dredge it and it's good for the next forty years, but you doubt it, you know? I mean, I've seen it fill in too easily, and, you know, you just don't wanna have to readdress it in another three years, even five, you know? So I just think we should, you know, really need to look at that, see, I mean, again, maybe we go past one twenty, I, I don't know. You know, I mean, that's something that the engineers have to tell us.
We don't. That's private property, we don't.
Yeah.
What?
We don't go past one twenty.
Past one twenty is all private?
Private, yeah.
Property as far as the, the lagoon goes?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, then, then, yeah, then you're talking to an SSA?
Yes. There was a mayor once who didn't get it. Wasn't bringing that up private property.
Whether it also dredged McCollum one too.
Right. Alderman Cannon.
Just for clarification, this, this is just a discussion item, so are you looking for consensus?
Yes. We'd like to have a direction to put this in the budget and move forward with getting a bid as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I, I will just start that and say that I would be supportive of having that in the budget. I would be leaning toward the dredging and removal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Where does everyone else stand on this? Does everyone else agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Question. If we put it in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna do it, right?
Right.
Till we see the proposal and then we'll know what, what could be done.
Okay. We just don't wanna be spinning our wheels either, so.
Okay, it's better than an amendment right away.
Right. Alderman.
So you said May first, they're starting east of the bridge?
That's our anticipated, what, we're meeting with them next week to finalize all the details, make sure we have the right loadout sites, and, but the assumption right now, the initial discussions have been starting at the mouth of the Fox River, the mouth of Boone Creek as it meets Fox River. We're working our way back towards Green Street.
Do we know how long that's gonna?
It will, it will take the better part of the season, will be into, anticipated to be into September.
So would the, the west side of the bridge, would that be conjunction, or would it be after that?
Ideally, we, we almost do it in conjunction, maybe there's some discounts, especially if there's a, you know, if there's a trucking component that we can combine with that person, or just not the natural progression.
All right. All right, Bill, you good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is the executive session. I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session. Alderman Santee.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Alderman Glav.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Cannon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaper?
Yes.
Alderman Mahaven?
Yes.
Thank you.